I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, first off, I'd like to make a couple announcements. One, I have to, by law, I have to make the announcement that tonight's meeting is being both video and audio tape. I also have to ask if anybody in the audience is doing the same. And would you give your name, please?
Yes, Michael Burrow.
Okay, and you're taping and audio both, right?
Yes, correct.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Uh, let's see.
Make sure everybody signed this sheet.
Oh, we got an attendance sheet going around?
Yes.
If it hasn't got to you, ask for it, okay? Please, I'd like to get everybody to sign that attendance sheet. All right, keep it moving, guys. Do you think everybody's on that? All right, comments and concerns. Anybody got any comments and concerns today? So, Sue, first.
Hi. Um, I was down at the post office just after the holidays, and I overheard a couple people asking about a location of a FedEx box. With everybody shopping online now and shipping FedEx, it might be a nice plus to the town. So, I did take it upon myself to call FedEx, got the contact information. It's a no-fee situation. They just need to get the contact information of the landowner of where the box would be located. I think we might have a couple spots on town-owned property where we could locate a box, either Warren or West Warren or both. So, I brought that contact info tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. There was another hand back there. Adam. Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you. Thanks for having me this evening. I just would like to take a minute of the board's time on folks here and people who are watching at home. I'd like to introduce firefighter Ian T. Sett Bells. He is our newest, please stand up. He is our newest full-time employee down at the fire department. I wanted to have him recognized with the board tonight. He has held a full-time position that was recently vacated, and Seth has actually been on the department for over two years now. He's credentialed well with our FBI on his job description, including firefighter one and two. He's certified EMT within the Commonwealth, has his material operation level, he holds a college degree. Again, he's very familiar with our policies and procedures. He's performed very well for us for two years, and he's a very welcome addition. This is not a traditional position. This keeps us at our minimal staffing of four full-time employees, myself included. So, I just wanted to invite him in front of the board this evening and introduce him to the board members and to the town as well.
Thank you. Well, welcome aboard. That's a thank, uh, congratulations on your promotion.
Thanks, sir.
We're, Dan, it's not here. I will take it upon myself to ask you why you're a registered voter.
I know.
Okay.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
He's both the town, he's a registered voter, and he lives in the county.
Well, he's been around for a while, so if he hadn't been, I think they would have caught up with him. Can you hold on, Mr.?
Okay.
Just a minute, please.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming in. Anything we can do to help you in your new job, don't hesitate about it. No, okay? But we appreciate the work you're doing, and we thank you very much for doing it. Thanks, Adam. Okay, you're next.
I just got a couple quick things.
You addressed the board. Addressed the chair.
Okay, I'm curious, is that camera on me?
Well, yes. You want it on you?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay, they're both on you.
Okay. Because about a month ago, I announced that I was running for selectmen, and the cameras weren't on me while I was speaking. The same thing with Arthur O'Brien, I'm just, anyways, I'm running for selectmen for the people out there, for Warren, and my name is Brian Corvall. That's one issue. The other one is, I'm just asking the selectmen if you can make available DVDs or CDs or something of the televised meetings so that people can get them, you know, buy them at the clerk's office. I think it would bring interest to some of the people, have them come to the meetings and get interest in the town. And that's all, you know, I mean, my Comcast bill is $200 a month, and if it wasn't for my girlfriend, I wouldn't have it.
Okay, so what's the point there?
The point is, can we get some CDs? But the point is, I'm a taxpayer, I also have a Comcast service, I'm paying for Comcast.
All right, as far as I know, we have an article, a town article that controls, you're talking about the minutes of this meeting, am I right?
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm asking for DVDs or CDs.
Hang on, hang on. I got your message, okay? I'm gonna let Igor talk. He seems to know what you're talking about. Well, Igor.
Hi. Michael Cooper, Chairman of WCET, Channel 12. Past last 10, 15, 20 years, since we've been starting broadcasting with the Board of Selectment meetings, all the events in town live, our policy has been that anybody that requests DVD will have to submit a written letter to Board of Selectment requesting that meeting with a $50 check.
Brian?
That the check is...
Sit down.
That the check is to WCET Scholarship.
You're distracting me.
The reason for that is that we are broadcasting every selectman meeting while they're permitting live, and for all the Comcast subscribers, we're rebroadcasting their meeting three times a week, and that gives them option to do whatever they want to do. Tape it, download it, and burn it themselves. If they want any help for us, for whatever reason that is, it will cost them $50 for the DVD, and they must send their request to Board of Selectment with a $50 check for the WCET Scholarship.
Okay. Now, is that, is that in compliance with that article? I've read, I've read the article. I did not have time to look it up. I didn't think I was gonna have to answer that question tonight. But do you know the article I'm talking about? We have an article.
I believe it is, because in the past we had...
That tells the people about all the information in these meetings. It's public information, and it can be had. There is a way, or a means to, is what you just stated in accordance with that article?
I believe so.
All right, you know?
I believe so, because in the past, we had requests from attorneys...
Will you take a note and look at that article up there? We'll have it here for me to read it, make sure. I read it.
If I could just comment, Mr. Tim?
Yes.
What, the reason I'm addressing you is, if you could, I'm trying to get a service to the town, and I'm addressing this selectman. I've already talked to him like five times already, and I'm asking the selectmen if they can do a service to this town and just, I know people, they're on vacation, or even me, I'm busy, and I miss wanting to see it. If it was available for purchase in the clerk's office for a reasonable price, people could get interested in the town. And I'm addressing the selectman, if you can work with Igor on that, that's, I'm addressing...
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you aware that these meetings are rebroadcast?
Yes, I am.
Until, and you don't see it there?
Yes, I am.
That's not enough?
I just mentioned, I just mentioned, no, it's not. Because if somebody's on vacation for a week or something, I think they should be available for three years, my personal, and I'm just asking for a service to the taxpayers somehow, if you can work with Igor, that's all. I'm addressing the selectman, not him.
Let me do this, Brian. I'm gonna make a public statement here and ask, I have a reporter here, and I'd like to bring this point out to you. If we have enough people in this town that truly want that service, they should sue a formance, but I'll be honest with you, Brian.
I'll start a petition.
I've been here since 1999 some, and you're the only one I've ever heard ask.
I'll start a petition. I mean, I'll start up the petition.
I don't do it on my say-so. I don't, I don't want a petition, but if you do what you want...
I think it's a good idea. I'm addressing, what I think is a good idea, to get people in for us to...
All right. What I'm asking here, if the public out there wants it, sees this as a big issue, okay? All they gotta do is call this department and let us know. We'll take names, people want that service. We get enough, we'll do something. We're not against it, if the public wants it.
You want me to have them call the selectman's office or write, I mean, how do you want me to get the people?
I'd like to have it put in writing.
Okay.
Because it is expensive.
Well, I want a petition on it.
It is expensive. It costs money.
I understand. I can do a petition, have a voter on at the town meeting.
I don't wanna, no, I don't want a petition. You do what you want. I can't tell you what you want to do.
Well, somehow, I'll bring awareness to you that people are interested.
All right, have I satisfied you on what I just said? I just publicly asked.
When I see the tapes in the clerk's office...
And there's a reporter sitting in this room that's been doing a very good job for you so far, I think.
When I see it, when I see it...
And I think you're right on that.
I just wanted, on the record, that I'm completely non-biased. I write completely non-biased.
No, I'm, all I'm pointing out is, you have no problem giving him coverage of what he's bringing forth in his campaign, all right?
To answer your question.
Am I right? I didn't say anything about being biased.
To answer your question.
I did find something about his campaign, yes. I also contacted the selectmen to ask him the worst kind of, he didn't return my call, which is why his side of the issue is unaddressed. I can't talk to people that don't call me back.
To answer your question, Mr. Chairman, when I see the tapes in the clerk's office, just a few of them, if, if three of them sell, maybe we'll do four.
Okay.
Then I'll be satisfied.
All right, we, I think we discussed that enough. Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Now, you addressed me, all right? I'm gonna tell you before you stand up. You addressed me.
No problem, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Very simple. Uh, one of the things to address...
Mr. Burrow?
Yes, thank you. Uh, what, I, I might have a solution. I've actually been talking with Igor, the person, Igor, yes, with, and actually, that was the agenda item I submitted actually last week to you, was to discuss some, you know, some possibilities of trying to help citizens versus the town and for him, his department as well, a better connection or a better way to be able to get copies or DVDs or cassettes or something from the community access TV. So, as far as I know, I don't remember the exact number of times that the replay is. I think it's only two or three times, but after that, there's no replay. So, if somebody is away for two weeks and they come back home, you can't go to their website, and they have a nice website, but the videos are not on that website. So, so if somebody missed something, you've missed it forever unless you were to do a request. So, that was just one thing I just wanted to touch base on, and that, and that will, hopefully, my agenda item, when you do put me on the agenda, hopefully, for next Tuesday, is I'd like to have a discussion with him on how we can improve that type of service to the citizens and to the Board of Selectmen. The only other two things I had is, I did wanna obviously have a conversation about number six on the agenda, but rather than speak about it now, do you want me to just wait till we get to number six?
Absolutely. That's why I have an agenda here, Mr. Burrow.
Yeah, okay, and then the only other question I had is, I had a question to ask on number four. So, do you want me to wait till we get to number four?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
And all you have to do is raise your hand if you have a question.
Yes, okay. Thank you, sir.
Igor.
Yes, one more time, I'd like to clarify something. We do rebroadcast any selectman meeting, high school games, graduations for the people that are away for a significant period of time. We had many, many requests for the graduations, if you haven't typed, or tape, or basketball games. People send us a letter, call me home. We reply to them, say, listen, because they want to tape it for themselves. We reply to them and say, listen, Friday at 6:00 PM, we will rebroadcast this, even though the event was maybe five months ago. We will rebroadcast that for you. Please have your equipment ready so you can tape it or whatever you want to do.
So, people being away for any period of time, do not miss it. If they wanna see that particular event or meeting, all they gotta do is put it in writing to you, and you have the option?
Correct. If we have it, we will replay it for them, and they can play it, and they can broadcast, they can tape it, whatever they want to do. On the second issue to Mr. Corvall is...
Brian?
That will stand because resources, time, if he wants a DVD, he will send a letter to Board of Selectmen. We get instructed by Board of Selectmen to make him DVD, and we gladly would do it for him, but the fee for it is $50 for DVD. And we will gladly do as many DVDs as he wants, but for each copy of DVD will be $50.
Okay, thank you.
That's the standard procedure. Thank you.
Brian, any comments and concerns? You had five minutes?
I've just...
You're using up this whole meeting on this one insignificant subject.
He beats himself over and over and over, like, for, nonstop.
All right, get yourself in order for the next meeting, because I'm gonna limit you to five minutes, and it's in our articles about these meetings, Brian. You guys come in here and you wanna take over the whole meeting for the whole night? That's not the way this meeting's run. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Levice, will you proceed with comment, correspondence?
Number one, we have a request from Susan Tao, the West Warren Library Director, requesting one-day boarding license for the West Warren Library fundraiser, St. Patrick's Day Dinner. It will be held Saturday, March 15, 2014, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Warren Senior Center.
All right, that's a...
I would make a motion to do so.
Okay, I second the motion. Any discussion? Very none, all in favor?
All right. Number two, we have correspondence from Karen M. Cullen, Director of Planning and Community Development, in support of the fiscal year 2014, Weir River Valley CDVG grant application, which will provide for regional housing rehabilitation and adult learning services for the towns of Warren, Weir, and Hardwood, as well as public infrastructure needs for Pleasant Street and Warren.
Okay, well, that's very nice of her, but she's a good team member, she's worked with us, and I was glad to receive her letter. Okay.
The Fire Chief report from the month of December 13th and January 14th are in.
Okay, any action you need from us on that?
Nope.
No? All right, anything outstanding? I haven't had time to read it yet, but...
Nope, they're just the standard reports, call volumes and budgetary.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, that's it?
That's it for correspondence.
All right, the next thing on the dinner, correspondence, go ahead.
You just did that.
I mean, five. Mutual aid agreement of Worcester, this is the thing submitted by our Police Chief last week. It was kinda hit us, knew, and we hadn't, weren't aware of what it was all about, so we asked the chief to come in tonight, give us a little update on that.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, the town currently has an agreement under Mass General Law Section 48U, which is a municipal aid agreement between respective towns such as Las, Westport Field, Sturbridge, Towns of La Potos. A couple of years back, I submitted a proposal to the town for a statewide agreement, which was sponsored actually by NEMA. The board subsequently signed off on that agreement. That was adopted back on December 13th, 2011. One of the issues for us became that the city of Worcester never signed on to the statewide municipal aid agreement, nor did we have an agreement with them separately, and the officers from our department spent a lot of time in Worcester through the court system. This mutual aid agreement that I've handed you was drafted in conjunction with the council from Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association and Worcester Police Department. All the agreement in effect says is that if a police officer is on legitimate business in the city of Worcester, one of the Warren police officers, an example, transporting prisoner or taking a mentally ill patient to a hospital for evaluation, they would retain police powers in the city of Worcester. It's not, it's certainly not geared for our police officers to initiate any type of action whatsoever within city limits of Worcester. It's just to have them retain powers while they're unofficial business in the city. It's actually, the agreement is quite simple, it's spelled out. I would suggest that, you know, the board...
Well, the thing I didn't understand, what benefit would it give you? Why do you want it?
It would benefit us in that hypothetically, if one of our officers is at the Worcester court and something happened in front of him that required police action, today, they can't take that action.
They can't take that action, even if it's their prisoner?
Even if it's their prisoner.
Really?
They don't have the right of arrest in the city of Worcester.
All right, now I understand. You understand it, Mr. Levice?
Yeah, you have one question. You, everybody but Worcester, you have agreements with everybody but Worcester?
A lot of the cities and towns have signed on the statewide mutual aid agreement under forty, chapter 40, section 4J. Worcester has not signed that statewide agreement. This is an agreement specifically between our department and the city of Worcester. My recommendation would be for the board to possibly forward it to Town Council, have Town Council take a look at it, and if Town Council's okay with it, give it back to the board, the board can send off one and forward it to the state.
Okay, thank you. Come in, we're not gonna vote on tonight. I wouldn't dare leave our companion.
If you have any more questions.
We're gonna wait until next week, but I will recommend that we vote and approve, all right?
If you have any more questions, just give it up.
Thank you for coming in, I appreciate it. Okay, the next thing we, we were gonna discuss tonight, we were gonna discuss the subject of the, our agreement, written, I mean, back in 2011, with Warren Pumps LLC and Portland Bell LLC. Everybody here in town knows what they're companies about. Because of, we've discussed this with our legal, and we're gonna be discussing with our legal, and for that reason, we are not gonna discuss that tonight publicly until we determine whether it's gonna be a legal matter or not, okay? Our council right now is reviewing the whole thing, and when we get a feedback from them, then we'll know which way we're going. And for that reason, we're not gonna discuss it in any extent tonight, all right? I got the agreement here, it's on the agenda, we will not forget it. All right?
Okay, I'm just, whenever you're ready, whenever you're ready.
Are you gonna talk to this? You have a question about this?
It's just a very simple question.
Yes.
At the last meeting, when I rewatched the videotape of the meeting, the, according to what I found on the internet and Senator Brewer's website, is that TIF agreement was five years, and Mr. Bill Scanlon said the agreement was for 20 years. So, I was just curious if what you, is, so that's my simple, very simple question, is, was that TIF agreement for five years or for 20 years? Because the town said 20 years, and according to Senator Brewer's website, the contract should have been for five years.
Our agreement is for 20 years, but there are options in there. We can terminate it, there's a mutual means by which, you know, but it could go for 20 years unless there's necessary, but that's all I'm gonna say to that.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to just clarify what it was.
I think you should talk to Mr. Brewer and see what his problem is with his record.
Well, it just showed, it just showed that his website said that the contract was for five years.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Next item, we want to review the proposed scope and services for our town planner, and Mr. Fowlen isn't here tonight, but we got the, we got the, the new proposed town planner's write-up. I think the planning board did an admirable job, and I'm not gonna discuss it tonight. We're gonna table that till, but I would like for you to send Mr. Fowlen a copy of it, so he's aware of it, and if he wants to come to our next meeting, we'll have this on the agenda for discussion, and we have a full board here, and he'll be prepared to discuss it with, all right? Now, we're gonna discuss briefly, we were gonna, the open meeting law complaint. If I can find it.
It's all those last two.
Is that the Warren Pumps? I'm gonna bring this up long enough to, because it ran up in open meeting by Mr. Burrow. Mr. Burrow brought to our attention, and he wanted to initiate a formal complaint. No, that's not it. That's a complaint. About a violation of the open meeting law, which he filed with the Board of Ethics, all right? And we turn, when we get those, we turn them right over to our legal council. Having said that and gone through the whole thing, we have prepared a response to Mr. Burrow on our own, and I'd like to read in part my guide. Thank you, sir. I might read this, 'cause I don't wanna. It says, "Dear Mr. Burrow," and you're gonna get your copy in the mail.
Which one?
You got it already?
Yeah.
Okay, but I want the public to know the good.
Post office.
Dear Mr. Burrow, the Board of Selectmen has received the open meeting law complaint from dated January 23, 2014, regarding the board's meeting to December 23, 2013. The complaint was received by the board on January 27, 2014. On the open meeting law, General Law 38, paragraph 23, a complaint shall be filed within 30 days of the alleged violation. Since the alleged violation in your complaint occurred on December 23, 2013, and the complaint was not filed until January 23, January 23, 2014, the complaint is not timely, therefore no response is required. However, because the board takes its obligations on the open meeting law very seriously, we are providing you as a courtesy with the following explanation as to the events you allege to be in violation of the law. As appears from the posted notice in the meeting minutes, copies of which are enclosed for your information, the board properly convened this meeting, December 23, 2013, meeting in the board's office. There was no executive session posted and no executive session held. The meeting was open to the public and members of the public attended. Any statements allegedly made regarding whether the meeting was open or an executive session were made by persons other than members of the Board of Selectmen and were incorrect. Thus, there is no violation and no remedial action is required. Please note that this response does not address the legal effect of any action taken by the board at December 23 meeting and does not address any matters other than the open meeting law. That's signed by me with the authorization of the other board members, and you got your copy, and there shouldn't be no questions. But I wanna explain this, what happened, Mr. Burrow, that wasn't said. Somebody, we were in the meeting, and somehow or another, the door was closed back there. Mr. Burrow was starting to come in here, and somebody on the outside of this room told Mr. Burrow he couldn't come in here. In fact, they told him he'd have to leave the building. He questioned why, and he was told by that person, not anybody had any authorization, by, and this means that we were in executive session, and he shouldn't even be in the building. He left the building, went out and set his car for some, and he come back again, and he was told the second time he couldn't come in. Am I right? Don't let me say anything wrong. The second time, I'm not gonna give you the floor, but I just ask you, if I'm wrong, you say so.
Uh, well, well...
Well, let me finish.
Yeah, yeah, I'll let you finish.
But anyway, he was told to go out again, because, but I read the letter to the exact content of the meeting, there was no executive session. The problem is, there was somebody outside that had no authority to tell him that, and I wanna tell people, unless that door's closed and somebody in here tells you you can't come in here, there's, that can be, nobody else in this building has any authority to tell anybody to leave this building. And we can be in the executive session here, and people can be out in that hall all night, that is no problem. I just want that understood, all right? Thank you very much. I'm not recognizing you fellows this time. You've had your time, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond?
No.
To speak?
No, no. If you wanna respond, you write, do it the same way we have in writing, okay?
Well, and I just want, I just want...
It's not on the agenda.
I just wanna explain something briefly, sir. I have the green signature card that this was, that you received the complaint January 23, which means that this was received within 30 days, and your letter says that you received it January 27, so that's not correct. And here's the other signature card, January 23. So, this office did receive the complaint within 30 days, and you and I had a conversation in the Board of Health, and you said an executive session was held, and that Lorena did the agenda wrong, that you said to my face while we were having, having a private discussion. And then you said that you were also gonna write up Igor, write a letter to Igor and to Lisa Mundell, that they had no right not to let me in the room, and that is what you told me.
Mr. Burrow, I did not say, I did not say, no, sir. Mr. Burrell, I did not say, I did not say, no, sir. Let me say, you're out of order, and I'm, no further comment. Yo, you can come to me outside this meeting, because let me tell you, you're out of order. I didn't recognize you for one thing. You said you wanted to tell me about those two, you did that. I'll look into that, okay?
But I'm just repeating, sir, I'm just...
But you just made a false statement, I'm not carrying this any farther, because I'm gonna have to...
I'm just repeating what you said, sir, during our conversation, when you said, yes, it was held with executive session, and that Lorena dismarked the agenda. That's exactly what you told me, and this letter does not reflect the conversation, what you said.
I'd like for you, I'd like for you to show those two receipts.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to show, show the wrong records.
Will you listen to me, please? I'd like for you to show those two receipts to our secretary, so she can take the information, and we can clarify it, all right?
Okay.
But let me tell you, this letter, this letter is because of what our legal counsel told us after reviewing this whole thing, all right? And then I wrote this letter. Based on their findings, okay? This wasn't my finding, but this is...
Yes, but if you don't share that information, that, of what you told me, that you did conduct an executive session, if you didn't tell Town Council that, she's gonna write a letter saying there was no executive session, because you told me that there was, and you said...
No, I did not tell you there was.
Yes, you did, yes, you did. I was standing right in the Board of Health, right in front of you, we were there, I was there for an hour and five minutes.
Hey, I am not gonna stand here with this one-on-one. I don't know what you're doing here, but I, you know, I think you're trying to...
I'm just having a conversation, that's all.
Oh, you're not having a conversation with Mr. Burrell. You're building a case on false accusations. You are, and I don't know your reason for it, but hey, I wish I did. I'm sorry for you, I really am.
So I'm, so I'm saying my complaint, I mean, I'm the one that has the records, and I have the town's records. So I'm, what I'm speaking to you about now is what the town records say. I'm not making anything, no, sir. If, if you want to have another conversation privately, that's fine, I'll swing down in the next day or so, we can, I'll show you the records I have, they came from this old town building.
I told you.
And we'll speak privately.
We're gonna stop the discussion here, I'll have a meeting with you, one-on-one.
That's fine.
With our counsel, and you want to bring your counsel?
Well, I'm not looking to sue, I'm just looking to just talk to you about it.
But hey, let me tell you something, if you're making false statements, I'm gonna get to the bottom of it, all right? I can guarantee you that.
Why would I be making false statements?
I have no idea, but I'd like to find out why.
Well, you're accusing, you're accusing me of, and, I mean, I have the town's records right here, and I even have...
All right, that's it, you're out of order.
I'll bring, I'll bring these cards, that's fine. Just gonna make a copy of this, thank you.
All right. I'm gonna ask you, do you have something pertinent to the...
To this question, to the question that was just on the floor, yes, I'd like to ask questions now.
That's a whole matter, different matter, we're not, that's not on our agenda tonight. And you didn't bring anything up during comments and concerns? I'm not recognizing you, sir, that's not in the, in the agenda, and I cannot be prepared to discuss that with you tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
If you want to be on the agenda, get on the agenda.
Use a warrant taxpayer law, do you know that?
Mr. O'Brien, there's protocol at these meetings, okay? And so far, you and, and Mr. Burrell, all you've seen to do is come in here and disturb it. And you do not have the authority to break up this meeting. And that's what you're doing, and I'm being gracious right now by not having you removed from this room. Any more outbursts, and any more discussion or voicing from you, without being recognized by the board, I'm gonna ask you to leave the room, all right? Thank you. Sir, if you want to discuss that further, and I thought we'd been over this and over this, sir, it's not on the agenda, and I'm not prepared to discuss it with you tonight.
I'm not discussing, Mr. Chairman.
If you wanted, if you have word to discuss on this, you talk to the secretary, make a vote, a date to be on the agenda. I'll gladly go over with you, and we're recognizing you.
I'm not discussing that, I just have a question for you, Mr. Chairman. And it does refer to that, all I want to know is something on the date that was given.
Make your statement.
December 23 was the night that Comcast was here.
Yes.
Yes.
So be it, thank you. I have to say he is correct.
Oh, well, now you've gone beyond, you, you said yes. I'm not sure what they were... Is that the night you're talking about, that they, he was told we're in an executive session?
Yes, that's actually in my complaint, it says the Comcast committee.
All right.
I missed part, what, what did Mr. O'Brien say?
Mr. O'Brien, he wanted to know if Comcast was here on the night of the 23. You said yes, I didn't answer.
They weren't?
Would you like to answer a question, Mr. Chairman?
I told you, I'll answer the questions, yes, but not right now. I'm not sure, I don't think they were, that's my answer right now, I don't think they were. If I'm mistaken, I'll apologize, but I don't think they were. We didn't go into executive session because they weren't here, am I right?
I didn't work that meeting, maybe it was just the committee? Was it the Comcast negotiating committee?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a statement to clarify?
No, sir, no, sir, we've said enough.
I can't make a statement to clarify, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it was just the negotiating committee.
What?
According to Lorena's minutes.
Who was the members there? Who was in attendance?
Uh, Igor, Don Nickerson, Frank Cheslack, and Aaron Saunders from Comcast.
Aaron Saunders wasn't Comcast, but we did not go into the executive session.
No.
Right.
I believe so, I don't know, I can read them, but...
We never went in, that's the whole gist of the story. The man was here, okay? I didn't think he was here, because we didn't go in, because we couldn't reach an agreement, and that night, we refused to go into executive session, there was no need to.
These are open session meetings, minutes.
Right, that was strictly an open session meeting. All right, enough said, okay? Let's finish our business here. Want to go on with the third one?
I'll make a motion, wait, sir. Warrant number 83, which is payroll, thirty-five thousand, two hundred, ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Uh, I'll say, I'll second. Any discussion? I thought you were gonna do one.
I'll do the other one, I don't want more. I make a motion, we accept warrant number 84, which is expenses, and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred, twenty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay, I second the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, let's do the minutes of the last meeting, do we have minutes?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from January 7, as written.
Okay, I second the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do you have anything you want to discuss at this point? All right, at this point here...
Do you want to do minutes?
Well, I think we're gonna go to this here.
I don't think I call it.
Give me a minute.
You got caught, who's gonna hear the comments?
Do you want to do this?
I don't think we got it. Those are the two you signed tonight.
Okay, we got minutes, I'm ready. I make a motion, we accept the minutes from December 23, as written.
Okay, I second the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Set.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, the next meeting date will be...
Is there anything for number 12, Mr. O'Brien? Other business?
Yes, you guys then?
I, no, I'm also, okay, I got other business.
Well, I'm gonna save whatever I got from last year. All right, what time is this hearing? I don't have a date on my agenda, a time.
It's whenever we're done opening.
No time, okay, all right, we're done. All right, we have a hearing here, a date, a night, based on a complaint from a, a taxpayer in our town against two town employees. And Mrs. Bellrose, is it Mrs. Bellrose?
It's Ms. Obertuck Bellrose, yes.
Ms. Obertuck Bellrose, oh, okay, thank you. And I have the, I have the road superintendent, I have the other member back there. Pet, would you mind coming up here and sitting up here for us?
Excuse me, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Maybe you should just make sure for the record that open session's okay with everybody, all the parties?
Oh, I'm going to, I'm getting ready to go over that, that's why I wanted to... Now, Mrs. Bellrose, you wrote us in a letter, and you, you, you said, I want to make sure this meeting is in open session, okay? Well, all right, we recognize that, but let me, let me, I want to read this. You made a complaint at two employees, and they have employee rights, okay? Now, these two employees here, I'm gonna read you. Rights of individuals, when a government body wishes to discuss the reputation, character, physical or mental health of an individual, or the discipline or dismissal of our complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, it must notify that person in writing at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, not including Saturday, Sunday, Thursday. And that person may request to be heard in executive session and with his legal counsel. So they have the right to designate how the hearing will be managed. But, I've talked to both of these gentlemen, and they're, they feel comfortable with having this hearing in open session, all right? So, uh, we're gonna have an open session meeting. So the first thing I'm gonna do, I'm gonna ask you, can you come up to the front seat?
Sure, not a problem.
But I'm gonna be talking, or you can sit in that second seat, like...
I'd like to sit right here, please.
That's it, good, thank you. All right, we're gonna hear from you first, all right? Proceed to go.
Okay, dating back over six years that I've been actively responsible for the property at 65 South Bridge Road, the Town of Warren has been dumping extra snow, ice, and sand, and salt on the property. Um, just for the record, if you're interested, I have a wonderful picture of 2011, and the, uh, snow pile is approximately four feet from the actual curbing, it's dumped up onto the property.
Mr. O'Brien, can I just, one moment, I'm gonna record, and I want to make sure that that was unrecorded, because that is law.
Yes, okay, thank you, thank you very much. Go ahead.
So, I had, um... There was a snowstorm on September 7th of this past year, 2013. And the following Monday, I was sitting in the window at the property, looking out at the corner, and I watched a large front-end loader scoop up snow from around the corner, and then turn, drive it right towards the property, and dump it onto 65 South Bridge Road. I then went outside, I, I thought, I can't believe this guy's doing this. So I went out to my front porch, I thought he was driving away, he went down the street a little bit, way down towards, felt the car wash, he picked up another large scoop of snow, and turned around and came right up towards 65 South Bridge Road. I walked out my, my, my walkway, I walked down, I said, stop! Kept on coming. Finally, he turned the machine off, and I said to the gentleman, I said, what are you doing? What are you doing, buddy? You can't do this here. And he just stared at me, and I said, excuse me, sir, you can't do this. You can't dump snow on this property. He looked at me for a while, and he goes, where do you want me to put it? And I said, not here, this is private property. I then had, I thought he was driving away, he backed up, I went back in the house, I got back into the house, and the house is windows, and I watched him turn around and dump that load on my property. I went back outside again, I asked, I said, who's your supervisor? He informed me he was a supervisor, and I told him, do not dump any more snow on this property. That was in February. I came back to the property, came back to the property on... The exact date was in the letter, came back to the property, and I have pictures that I sent to you in my letter on the 27, where I had found what was remaining after a snowstorm of approximate... There's no snow on, on the road, there's no snow banked up, there's just a large mound of snow dumped on the property. In this past year, we found out that there's a cistern in that property, and that cistern sits directly underneath where the Town of Warren has been dumping snow continually for probably ten to fifteen years, based on pictures I have of the home. There is a breach in the cistern, and I have been advised by an engineer that the gross weight of continual dumping of snow, ice, and, and sand on the area is causing this cistern to breach. I'm not asking for you to fix the cistern. I'm asking that I get the apology that I requested, when I finally got a hold of Mr. Boudreau, who finally called me back, five days after I sent the letter, I went to the town garage trying to, you know, solve this problem, there was a snowstorm coming. I didn't want to find more snow on the property. There was nobody there, Mr. Boudreau was there, I walked through the garage, I was yelling at his phone, the radio was blaring, there was no one there. I got in my vehicle, and I started driving out. Then I saw a large, a large front-end loader in the back scooping up snow. I went to the back, and I stood there, and I kept on waving, and finally the man stopped the machine, and he turned it off, he goes, can I help you? And I said, well, I need to talk to somebody about the snow. And I told, and he goes, where are you talking about? I told him I have a problem with snowplow. And as soon as I told him where I lived, he goes, oh, yeah, corner of Parkview. And I said, well, we cannot, I said, you can't do it anymore. And the question again was, where are we gonna put it? And I said, well, you know, sir, I know you got forty acres behind the town landfill, put in a dump truck and take it up there. He then told me, we can't do that, ma'am, it's hazardous waste. Well, I sent this letter, I talked to Mr. Boudreau, I got what I considered no response, because on January 4th of this year, I have a picture of a mountain of snow. It's approximately three feet off of the curve, sitting on the property. There's very little snowplow anywhere else, just this big mountain of snow on the property. So that's when I decided that I was gonna try again. I got nowhere. There's another storm coming, there was a small storm here, if you... There was no, there was no, very little plow, very little plow, except for the... That was shoved up on 65 South Bridge Street. That was after I had sent these letters, that was after I had talked to Selectmen LaBash. So, there was, and I had spoken with Mr. Boudreau. And when I spoke with Mr. Boudreau, he informed, he, he, and I had talked, he goes, well, you know, well, where are we gonna put the snow? I said, I don't really care, but you can't put it there. So we talked back and forth, he asked me what, what I wanted, and I said, I want an apology. I don't want my cistern fixed, I don't want to get into a match with the town about who's gonna pay for all that damage, I just want an apology. I want an apology from the town employee who was rude to me twice. Once, by disrespecting me and dumping snow after I told him not to do it, and two, I had a discussion with him, he told me he would, you know, he would pass it on to Mr. Boudreau, and then the next storm, it got dumped on the property. I went so far as to check with the town, with who does contracting in the town, and who might use a front-end loader as contractor. And there's only one gentleman in this town who uses a con, who uses a front-end loader as contractor, and that's Mr. James Fountain. And Mr. Fountain does not plow South Bridge Road. So when I talked to Mr. Boudreau after the second event, and I said to him, I can tell you at 9:30 in the morning on Friday, someone went by the house and checked for me. There was no snow plowed and mounded up on the property. And then, at 3:30, when I arrived at the property, that's, I took the big picture. I took the picture. When I talked to Mr. Boudreau, I said, well, it's plowed, it's not plowed onto the property, it's dumped on the property. From the pictures, you can see it's dumped. And he informed me at that time that... He couldn't tell me who it was, because it could have been any number of town people who, you know, anyone, any, any number of town employees who drive that vehicle. And I said, well, don't you assign the work, sir? And he said, yes, he does. And I said, well, then who did you assign the work that day? You should know who you assigned the work to. And he goes, well, I don't know, it could have been anybody. And I said, well, I would find out who, because I, you know, I do have letters telling you not to do this. So, I then went to the, to the effort of looking into this further. Last Wednesday, Mr. Boudreau told the Capital Finance Committee that there's only one gentleman who drives that piece of equipment in this town, that nobody else in the town drives that piece of equipment. It's a man named Pet. So, he then also explained to these folks that salt and sand is hazardous materials. So for at least six years that I know of, the Town of Warren has been dumping their hazardous materials in the form of salt and sand on 65 South Bridge Street. And all I have asked all along is that I get an apology from the person who has been rude to me.
Okay?
Yeah.
I think we have a case. All right, gentlemen, Mr. Boudreau, you want to say anything at this point?
Uh, sure, I talked to Mrs. Bellrose on the phone, she had called. Uh, I was busy, called her a couple days later, didn't get, wasn't able to get back to her right away. Uh, she explained to me the situation, I explained the situation to her, and I apologized to her on the phone... to her on the phone that day. This season, there has been no snow removed with the loader until last Thursday on anywhere in town. So this season, any snow on that property was done by pickup truck.
All right, pickup truck? Wasn't your, wasn't your dumpster, your loader, your nothing?
The loader has not removed snow from intersections this plow season from November two thousand thirteen until today, until last Thursday.
Now, uh, can I go back to Mr. Bellrose? When you went outside and people were dumping snow, what were they driving at that point?
It was a large front-end loader.
Large front-end loader?
Yellow loader.
And Mr. Chairman, could I ask for the date of that particular episode?
It was the, it was Monday, the ninth of February.
This year?
Yes.
This year? Ninth of Fe-
Pitt was one of us driving that loader?
I believe it was you, sir.
Is this the same gentleman that you spoke to in the, at the garage?
Yes, but he didn't have glasses on.
At, that was, was December twenty-sixth, no?
No.
Well, that's what it says in the letter.
Then, then it was the twenty-sixth, yeah.
Okay, it says, uh, you came to the garage December twenty-sixth. And that was me you talked to?
I believe it was you, yes.
Well, I was on vacation that week then. Okay, I was in Boston. So it wasn't me. Okay? And it wasn't me that was dumping snow on your property, because I do not dump snow on intersections. All right? That's not a very good practice. And I don't do it. So you got your people wrong.
Well, wait a minute, you corroborate his, what he's saying now?
Yes.
Ted, Tom?
Yes, he spoke to-
You're corroborating what-
I was on vacation December twenty-sixth.
He was on vacation, so he could not have done it on that day.
He wasn't, right, he wasn't in town.
You know of anybody else in this town that's using a loader, going around picking up snow and dumping it?
Last February, could have been any one of us. This plow season, no one.
Pitt?
She also said that I was, she was told by residents that I was the only one that runs the loader, that's completely false.
That's false.
Well, I know that, I'm gonna see-
Excuse me, sir. I believe that in the minutes of the, um, Capitol, um, meeting from last Wednesday, the Capitol Committee meeting, um, when there was a discussion about the new equipment, um, or the new tires for the front-end loader, um, there were questions asked about the front-end loader, and I believe Mr. Boudreau told the Capitol Committee that Mr. Pitt was the man who's been in charge of that machine and run that machine for thirty years.
Lee Man, I wanted to talk to you for a second. Okay, I'm sorry for the interruption, but I thought I was gonna lose you.
That's fine.
Okay. Now, so I've got cap, capital planning or, capital planning or FinCon? Capital planning?
Capital planning.
That's what you said, okay. Anybody who's in capital planning that can help me out here?
That's David. I was at the meeting, sir, and, uh, remember the gentleman that asked me the question? And the question was, "Who is the main operator of the machine?" And I told the gentleman, "The main operator of the machine is Mr. Blaze." In most situations, if there's anything going on, Mr. Blaze will operate the machine. Can anyone in the department run that machine? Absolutely. Has everyone in that department run that machine? Absolutely.
Well, I know, I've seen two or three people on that machine on my road in front of my house.
But, Mr. Chairman, through you, all I can say as far as facts right now, the only time that the loader actually dumps, removes snow from intersections this plow season, also from September first of two thousand thirteen to today, started last Thursday. Other than that, any snow making in town-
Has she got a place over there that people have taken advantage of dumping snow, that we can't put snow somewhere else?
When I talked to Mr. Bellrose over the phone, I said that I would eliminate dumping snow there. Plowing small amounts could possibly happen in a small storm. Uh, we could go up to that intersection right now, and there's very little snow on that intersection from our contractors. Am I correct in saying that, Ms. Bellrose?
No, you, you told me on the phone that you would not put any extra snow on the property.
Right.
Now, you just said on a small storm, you're gonna plow extra snow.
No, I said, on a, on a storm, there'd be snow on the curve.
I wish you folks would talk to me, okay? You talk to me and you talk to me, don't talk back and forth between each other, please. How about, you didn't say you're against a normal plowing, because they can't control where the plow goes from the plowing the road, right?
There's normal-
You understand that?
Yes, there's normal plowing right now.
Okay.
There's normal plowing.
And you're not, you're not complaining about that? You're not asking that to be removed?
No, but-
This is extra snow being brought onto your property and dumped.
Yes, being pushed, extra, extra snow.
I thought, I knew where that property is, but don't you have a white driveway there and to the right of your house looking into the house?
Yeah.
Are they going into that driveway?
No, they're going on the, they're, they're mounding-
Would you share that picture with us here for just a minute?
I'll share all my pictures there.
You, you seen the picture?
No, exactly.
You will send pictures, sir. And notice, there's no snow whatsoever left there during that storm, except for the big pile that was left over.
Is this the pile right here in town? That's it?
Keep, keep looking. That was left over from the storm. Now, there's a big pile of snow, there's no other snow, snow on the street.
Yeah, right.
Except for the big pile, it's piled up, and that's directly on top of private property, and it's a cistern. And it's, according to this gentleman, it's hazardous waste. The salt and the sand-
And if it is all snow everywhere, it's hazardous waste.
He said, he told the Capitol Committee, um, on Wednesday night this past week, that, um, they have a problem with where they can put the salt and sand, because it's hazardous waste. So my question is, how can you put extra on my property? Now, this is the one in question. Look at the pile of snow dumped on that property. Look at that.
Well, somebody had to work to get it over there. Do you see this picture here?
Mr. Chairman, I could build a snow pile on an intersection with a pickup truck, probably twelve feet long by six or seven feet tall, there'd be no problem at all.
Yeah, but you wouldn't back onto her property and put it-
That's without touching, that's without leaving pavement. I could make a snow pile-
With your loader?
No, with a pickup truck.
With your pickup truck?
Yes.
Oh, okay. The blade's that far out in front of the truck?
Curved, four inches off the tie.
Well, you know, let's cut to, let's cut to the meat of it.
Can I show you one more picture, please, sir?
Please?
That snowbank right there is approximately four feet from the road, 'cause it backs up, I measured that tree. That big, that's, that's what they do when there's a lot of snow. That's four feet from the road, sir. That wasn't done with plow. That was done well before they plowed.
All right. Let's get, cut to what I thought was a real part of the case here. You're looking for apology. Is the person you're looking for apology, is he in this room tonight?
Yes.
Is there anybody in this room tonight feel like they owe Mrs. Bellrose apology?
I told her over the phone, "I'm sorry for the excess snow that's been on your property." And I would tell her tonight-
I think she's talking about not just the snow on her property, but the way she was talked to. Now, I would like to think that all of our town employees are least civil in our dealings with our taxpayers, including myself. Sir?
She's accused me of talking rudely to her when I was on vacation. I would like an apology from her.
I will apologize for that date, but why this man stands out to me is this is a picture of my uncle, Joe, Joseph Overtuck. And when, when my first incident with him on this street, on Southbridge Road, I thought I was looking at my uncle. So I know that my first incident when a man was so rude to me-
Is that picture, is that gentleman right there in the room tonight?
No, this man is dead.
And dead?
But this is my uncle, and I, when I saw him-
From where you were holding over there?
When I saw him, I thought, "Oh my God, that's my uncle."
Yeah, well, I thought that man-
So I know that the first incident I had, when the man told me that he was a supervisor, and he then dumped on the property again, who's this gentleman?
All right. I think I've heard enough of all parties. And there's nobody in this room feel like she's the one they're talking to, am I right? If you're on vacation-
The second day of, if he says he's on vacation?
Check the records, you can prove it.
I have to believe him, but the first time, on February ninth, it was that gentleman right there.
I disagree, Mr. Chairman, because I do not pile snow on intersections. If anything, I take the snow away. That's not a practice of an operator, to be piling snow on an intersection.
Yeah, you mean. It's a very rare complaint, Mrs. Overtuck, and Miss Overtuck, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Miss Bellrose. Miss Overtuck was your aunt, am I right?
She is my aunt.
She is your aunt, how's she doing?
Probably not, never saw.
Um, maybe it's called my house, excuse the name, but I talked to Tom, Tom has gone down and put, um, stakes on the corner where the collegiate snow plowing was put onto her lawn, so at this point, it's not gonna happen anymore. Um, that, that's as much as I can tell you between Tom and I, from what you call my house, so it, it, at least that's good.
All right, I'm asking you guys to take very special attention and, and talk to your crew about that problem, okay? You've done that? And you can recharge your crew when not put snow in that. Now, I'm not gonna make a final decision on this hearing tonight. I have the hearing, we're gonna discuss it, and we're gonna do some investigation. I'll call you back with an answer in a few days, all right?
That's fine.
And I'll have you back here, talk to you.
Mr. Chairman, in the event, in the, Miss, Miss Bellrose, I'd like the actual dates of these incidents, so I can coordinate with who was operating that equipment, so we can find out who was speaking rudely to her. Because neither one of us-
Can you help them out there?
February ninth?
Of two thousand thirteen.
Mm-hmm. Was the first incident?
It says in the letter, she came out to the, approached the machine and the operator of the machine, you asked, "Who was the supervisor?" And you were told, "It's me." Well, being-
I didn't do it.
Okay. I am not a supervisor, no one else at the garage is a supervisor, so. I don't think anybody would say, "The supervisor's me," if they're not the supervisor.
At this point, that's, what it's gonna do is go back and forth, so why don't we just, why don't we just let it ride until we could have-
All right, so let me tell you this. I personally will apologize to you for anybody that failed to treat you civilly, okay? I think you should have been given civil treatment, but you have to recognize the fact that sometimes these guys are, were in big snowstorms, but I don't see anybody dumping snow on that property, I really don't. But like I say, I'm not gonna make a decision here tonight. We're gonna discuss it.
They won't get involved, because Tom has put stakes up there, so they can't.
Our other selectman has looked your property over, and he's looked at pictures, and I want him to be involved with the final decision, okay? So I'm gonna close the hearing at this point, unless somebody else got something to add and say. All right? Thank you for coming, appreciate it, the hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll be in contact in a few.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Chief? Okay, look at any other business? I gave the date on the next meeting, next meeting, we're gonna hopefully, hopefully, we're on every Tuesday from now on, unless we, weather is preventive from happening, because of, but, you have anything to say about budgets tonight or anything? Nothing more? How's that?
No, I'm pretty comfortable for now.
Okay, next meeting is the eighteenth, and, uh, at that time, I'll accept the whole- Second, all in favor? Thank you all for coming. All right, sir? Let's see. Yeah, I'll let you go, I'm sorry I had to hold you, but I had an important question to do. Do you wanna put on the attendance?
Spitting, yeah.
Well, it is, okay. You're open, huh? Oh, the meeting's over, yeah. Do you wanna?
It's about that, who we are.
Oh, yeah.
I came the afternoon, because I was expressing my comments, and I was, yeah.
Sure, somebody-
I walked, I walked. I just told her. It's all done, I can just tell. Do you ever have to try to look at the scene by somebody when I look like?
Who's that?
I don't know. You were in here.
I mean, yeah. And I walked in, and as soon as I saw his face, I said, "That's like him." And I walked in.
We've already looked at the minutes, anything else, sir? Did you adjust the minutes?
I know.
I mean, obviously, he said, "That one."
No, but I know. But not the minutes, did you give me the attending? Are these?
Yeah. Sorry. Everything was fine last fall, correct?
You mean the one right outside?
Yeah. Basically, the patient, there's, you know, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that model is on.
Yeah, I could, I could pick apart the people. Like, what do you want to do with it? Actually, maybe this is correct, you know, like, yeah.
Well, well, it's still, well, it's still in the-
Yeah, but I gotta make the DVD, so you know it's gonna be a DVD when we pitch it out.
Right, yeah. Or, well, you could make a DVD or a set.
I can't make a set. I gotta transfer it, I'm gonna need a transfer.
Oh, okay.
Remember, that's the last one, we discussed that, and it's, and I can't, because I, I'll be the first one to give you, because, remember, the meeting with you, with your questioning, it was so long, we didn't have the chance to set up upstairs.
Right, right, yeah.
So we went on the, and I think that the first part, which I was asking, I do own it, we also did have the video camera, I think, you know, so. I promise you, if you wanna do it Sunday night at thirty-five, and, and like I said a few times, we should, we give you time to get the thing set up. I, I promise you, when I get home, the one that you requested before, and this one here, I promise you, I'm gonna get it, okay?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Can I talk to you for a few more?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
About five, five minutes with him?
Yeah, let him finish, and put it away.
Be upstairs or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That first night I met you.
Yeah.
Oh, do you remember what date that was?
Yes, that was the meeting. And that was the Comcast meeting. What was, what was the sixth?
They're saying that was a Monday night.
Uh...
I thought that was-
No, that was Monday.
It was Monday.
Yes, because the meeting was supposed to be the week before, which is on Tuesday, but because the twenty-fourth was supposed to be seen from that Tuesday, it jumped to Monday.
And I really believe that it started long before you. And this guy over my office, and she couldn't stand up for herself and tell the town to stop doing this. And my, and that water problem with that house, it's right across the, on the street out in the lawn, it's a tricky, a lot of, it's a lot of, so I think it's a long history, but that was no-
The problem I'm doing, that's why I'm, all right. All right, so just put down with the-
Every insurance provider now is going to, you know, and, and, well, I, I, I read that, but it doesn't necessarily, so, kind of letting it into a little bit of, of, of a wall, you know, I'm trying to handle it, I'm okay. I'm trying to make it, it's, I'm trying to save some money, you can do this.
It's kind of a gray area, but definitely-
It's just fine, I don't like to, you know, bring in more money, it's still, it's, it's a, 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 it's
You know, I read the town articles, but I didn't bring that.
Yeah.
No, it's just, no, it's not that. It's just, it's not you guys. It's just you know as well as I do how it's perceived. And, and I don't need to hint that I'm overextending budgets when it's not those of...
Okay. Yeah, no, I didn't know that.
It's just that, that's it. So, but, you know, what comes to you, you know, the reality is, you know, I can't change the season on the salaries until I can, you know, hold on, I mean, I stay on call. I can't go shopping. I can't order...
But I guess the fact remains that...
Like, normal, normal people, you know.
Nobody from the Board of Slapmen have got bullshit, you think that?
You know, nothing comes in that's, you know, and they get paid per call. I'll tell you, it's, 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 it's... They're, they're all very similar, but they're higher. Some of them are paying in the three, but you deal with it. You bring this up, you need it or something, it wasn't, because I was trying the same thing I told you. But I never told you, like, Lorraine's 7, you know, it was executive.
Hey!
So I'm not, so I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just talking about what's the town, I'm just saying, you cannot have the minutes because they're executive. The reality is just that, you know, some of them, you know, some of them have...
Hey, Lorraine, I thank this, bless you up for the 24th, and 9th.
We did, 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 we did. You didn't, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't.